Okay, we'll call the Traffic Commission meeting to order. Reminder, the committee members are Jeff Smith, Dan Allen, Steve Rice, and Kevin McCartell. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Motion seconded by Rice. Any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. First...
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to... Who made the motion?
Kevin.
Okay. Motion and second. Any other additions? Or any other input? Not.
And so we'll be setting up... There's gonna be speakers and that type of stuff?
We'll have a stage.
Program coming out?
We'll have a stage and speakers, and then chairs set up on Main Street. Basically, at the corner of Sixth and Main, facing southwest essentially, so you can look at both sides of the Corn Palace.
Okay.
Right in front of the Corn Palace.
The picture angle?
Yep, yep. And then we'll have parking from Sixth to Seventh for motorcycles. There'll be a motorcycle ride from the Legion Riders, starting at the Ship Memorial over in Sioux Falls at 9:30 a.m. And they're riding over. There'll be like a flag relay. They'll come over and we'll hang the flag up on the stage. Obviously, weather permitting, so we may be moving it inside, but right now it's planned to be outside. And then there'll be a couple food vendors, Chisels and Coogan, so it'll be kind of a salute to South Dakota food. So the two food vendors will be set up outside for the duration of the program.
Will the Jitter's Building be down before or after that?
Don't know.
When is the date?
October 26th.
It's a week after the Pheasant opener.
Probably the week of.
Back it up.
It's a week or so.
You start with Monday.
Yeah. Can we start that Monday, but we'll hold it off until after this.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Next, Mitchell Main Street and beyond would like to request... Is requesting a parade permit and street closure and no parking for Tuesday, December 4, 2018 for the Parade of Lights beginning at 7:00 p.m., following street closures and no parking beginning at 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 4th. And we'll visit with them. We may do 5:00 p.m. also. We were talking, I think last year, the businesses had requested to make that 5:00 p.m. so they didn't push people out. So, we're gonna put four... Approve it for 4:00 p.m., but if they want to push it back to 5:00, we can do it then. And then the closures on Main Street to Railroad Avenue through Ninth. That's Main Street first to Railroad Avenue through Ninth. Raleigh to Lawler, and then Railroad Street from Raleigh to Kimball. And it actually won't go to... All the way to Raleigh Street will stop at the alley, so we don't block access to the depot. And then the city parking lot just north of the depot, Pub and Grill. And the float lineup for parade will be at first through Railroad on Main Street, and including two blocks east on Railroad Avenue and a half a block west on Railroad. In addition, it's requested the street lights on Main Street be turned off at 7:00 p.m., which is the start time for the parade, and is for the duration of the parade. Similar to the other years we've done it. Any input on this or questions?
Okay. Move for approve. Request for street closure for Parade of Lights. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
We'll go ahead and start the sidewalk committee. As a reminder, we have Dan Sabers, John Doscher, Marty Bernton, Jeff Smith. If I could have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Marty and John, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna kinda go over the, you know, five-year plan. And first of all, we'll start off with the 2017 sidewalk plan. So this plan, we've been working on for the last two years. The section that was done last year was on Burns, so it'd be to the south, south of Cedar, down in this area. This is the section that we did last year. And then this year, we worked on Edgerton and then Ash. So this area here, and then going this way. We have pretty much that whole area done except for two properties. One of the properties, she just moved in there this spring, and she has arranged for the church to help her get her sidewalk done, so we told her we'd give her a little bit of time. I have tried to talk with her, but haven't been able to get in touch with her, so... Place is right down here, right on the corner.
On the corner of Edgerton?
On Cedar and Edgerton. They had to do some work in there, which was done by the previous property owner. They had to move a fence that was actually in the right-of-way. And we have a tree that we need to take out, and we have been coordinating the tree removal with the property owner. The issue with the tree also is we're gonna have to coordinate with Northwestern Public Service because, and some of the other utility companies, because the utility lines are growing right into the middle of the evergreen tree. So we're just coordinating that with the efforts with her. My hope, and what I've told her before when we originally talked about it this spring, is I want to make sure that the sidewalk is done this year. She told me that it would get done, but she's getting some help from the church, so we're kinda working with her in that schedule.
Before you leave there, I have a question. I'm not on the committee, but we've routed these people down Burns to the sidewalk, and we don't have them anyplace to access the park.
The only... I'm just gonna make a quick comment on that. The only thing would be is you would... What we might want... End up doing is add a handicap ramp here. That way, I don't have a mid-block crossing.
You've got a mid-block crossing that's up on the other side, though, on Anderson Street.
Over here?
Over here.
Okay.
You've got one right there, and then another one down there.
Okay. Well, we will take a look at that and come up with a crossing over there.
Request from one of my neighbors.
Okay.
Our dogs get used a lot.
Okay, then the other sidewalk that we have that's unfinished is up on Ash, and it's roughly right in this neighborhood. It's one lot. The gal that lives there, her husband passed away this summer. And, well, first he went in a nursing home, then he passed away, and we told her we'd give her a little bit of time. She is in the process of selling the house, and the new property owner is gonna take possession to the end of October, so we're working with her. Haven't been able to tag her and just tell her it needs to be completed this year, so... So those are the only two properties that are not complete. Then we'll move ahead. Any questions on the last two years sidewalk program? Alright, we'll move into next year's proposed area. Now, when we started our five-year sidewalk plan, we started this back in about 2014, when we created the five-year plan. This plan here is, of course, a couple years behind. And at the time, we had multiple contractors bidding on work, whereas now we have... The last time we bid, we only had one contractor bid on it. We have gone through and we've topo'd all the areas that are all highlighted in the yellow, and...
Terry, why?
Why what?
Why do we only have one person bidding?
Because I think some of it is... Some of the prices that we've been getting are really cheap. And a lot of the other contractors said, "Well, I can't compete with that price," so then they kinda dropped off. Plus, it kinda ties down a contractor for a year, especially if they could pick up a lot of extra work. I think we'll pick up some contractors as we move on, because that price is creeping back up again. But we just gotta keep on trying, and hopefully we'll have some other contractors bidding on it. I think sidewalk contractors, from what we've seen, are kind of a first step or first phase of contractors of how they kinda get started, and then we see them grow on and get bigger. And then it's just like... I think it's a good beginner or starting point for some of these contractors, so...
So in spite of the fact that we don't have a lot of competition, you feel like the pricing is good, competitive?
I think the pricing...
Better than we should be?
I think the pricing is almost better than we should be paying, but I'm not gonna complain about it. We've talked... I think it's a great thing for the city, and a great thing for the property owners that are having to pay for that. And talking to other communities around the state, our price is half the price. That... There are some people paying six to eight bucks a square foot, where we're paying four. So I think we're really lucky to get pricing that we are getting. Plus, we got good materials and things like that, so... So in looking at that, we did a topographic survey and tried to look at this whole area. And at the time, we wanted to fill in the whole area, so that's why we picked the areas that were highlighted. I think we need to... If we want to stay in this area for next year, we need to section off certain ones and only do certain ones to make sure that we could try to get some of them done. And we could do that in combination of doing more hazardous sidewalk. With the contractors that we were having, we're pretty much just getting proposed work done and not having enough room for hazardous work to get done. When we send out letters, a lot of the property owners just prefer to have the city contractor do it. So I'd like to break up some of these areas into smaller areas and try to do a little bit of both. Try to do proposed work, hazardous work, and to install some handicap ramps around town to meet our federal guidelines. Any questions on that? Just for some... In doing some budget numbers, right now we have... So the city portion is what we pay for, for the ramps, fixing driveways to meet ADA sprinkler systems and walls. So if we look at, like, Edmonds, so that would be this area right here. That area would be approximately $75,000 of city portion that we would end up paying for. If we look at this area here...
Terry, how much assess the property owner?
Um...
I asked for that three years ago to make sure that that's included in all of these something on the vet number.
Okay. We will come up with that number. The other area, which is this area on Seventh... On Eighth, and then some other areas on Seventh, would be approximately $25,000. Iowa from Second to Fourth, which is down here, $42,000. And then Montana from Second to Seventh, which is this stretch here, would be $85,000. So, but we will come up with those assessed costs also.
Right.
Yeah, and bring it back to you. So we'll come up with that area. The one option that I thought of that we could try if you wanted to do one section, or we could just work on hazardous and ADA ramps next year, is we could work on the area on Seventh and Eighth. This area here and this area here by the school. So here's the middle school right here. There's substation here and an empty lot here. There's no sidewalks on the north side, but this would add sidewalks on the south side. There are sidewalks in this section here, and then this is where the apartment complex, which is sidewalk here, but there's a short stretch that is not there that we would look at adding on. But I will get those numbers put together, then we will talk about that at a future meeting.
So that would make eight that sidewalk on both sides, all the way from Minnesota?
No. The only... There's no sidewalk on the north side. So unless you want to... We can look at adding...
On the inside of the middle school there?
There is, yep. There's sidewalk here.
Yeah.
So we would have sidewalk on the south side from Minnesota all the way to the bypass, which I think is a good stretch, with the motel there, and it'd be a connecting route in between the two on the south side. And then the area on Seventh?
Our apartment.
Yeah, the apartment. Did I say motel? I'm sorry. And then we would connect areas on Seventh that do not have any sidewalks, so... Which is basically in this area. And then we would also go after hazardous sidewalk and ADA ramps to meet our federal Alright, with that, if you wanna... We could move into the next following year, just to kinda look at where we're at in the following years. So in 2020, we would look at sidewalks, and it's kinda hard to see because of the color, but sidewalks down in this Mitchell Boulevard area, south Minnesota. Over in the Wesleyan area. That would be in the following year after we get done with the middle school area. And we would also continue sidewalks on Norway Street. This is a big area that, once again, will have to probably break in into multiple years.
That's the one I'm gonna move forward.
So I guess it'd be up to you guys. I could come up with numbers to see what the city portion, assessment portions are. Bring back the next three-year phases, and we could break them out.
I just am curious, you know, this stretch on Norway is an area that I have had a lot of comments on because it's a school area. I think of Cheryl Aslison. She takes her multi-age classroom, and they walk down to the bank, and there are no sidewalks for them, and there... She's got this little parade of kids that are going down there, and Barb Bouders as well. But I wonder if there's any way... You know, one of our primary goals, when we were talking about sidewalks in the very beginning, was we were gonna focus on school areas and parks. And I wonder if there's any way that we could... I mean, is this etched in stone, this plan? Or is there any way that you can move some things up and maybe push some other things back? Or is it too late for that? Just a question. I'm not on the committee, but that's just a question. And, you know, I just... I look at the middle school. That's certainly an area that fits the bill, and we're putting that off. And I keep... I mean, in the back of my mind, I'm sitting here thinking, our whole goal of these sidewalks was to have them around schools and parks. So I don't know if it's something that we could maybe... I don't... That's... I guess that's one of the reasons that I ask, is that is this like... This is our five-year plan, and we're just getting the information, or is there any wiggle?
Terry, would it be safe to say, though, you'd like to try to stay in somewhat the same area when you're doing these things? Like, for example, you wouldn't want to be over by the middle school and have to go over to the Norway project?
Correct.
When you want to try to stay.
Right.
So can we do 2020 and flip-flop with 2019, is what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah, and I don't...
Whoever's going to bid, they don't want, okay, I'm bidding over here, and then I'm done, I can pack all my stuff.
Right.
All the way across town.
Right.
They'd like to move down just one block and keep on working, is what I'm thinking.
I think if...
Stay in the same corridor area, so...
I think that would definitely work. I think a contractor definitely wants to stay in a certain area. The other thing would be is if, when we do the bids, and the bids came in and we got two contractors, then, you know, the whole idea was, when we had these different areas, was to try to... Hopefully, we'd have two contractors that would be low bidders on, so we could be working on two areas at one time. But why... But why don't I just come up with some numbers of what the assessment cost would be, city cost, and then we'll just run it by you at a future meeting?
Weren't we two supposed to go ahead and send out letters a year in advance on all this to all the homeowners?
Uh, we were, and we ran behind. With some of the projects we're working on right now, we've gotten behind. That's why Kyle wanted me to put it on the agenda, so we could kinda talk about where we're at next, and then that way, we could give these property owners a year heads-up. And that would be the idea of working on hazardous sidewalks next year, working on our federal guideline of installing ramps. Work on that next year, and then it would give those people a year in advance to get some of that done.
If I may, too, just another point to make on the Norway. That is currently used by people who are avoiding Burr and not knowing where that construction schedule is gonna be. It's probably a good thing to not have that tore up in 2019 anyways, so 2020 might be a better timeframe for that.
Let's... One thing on here. I have had requests that... Oops. To add sidewalk on South Raleigh, from Cabela's Bike Path to Norway. So that's this section here. Yeah. There's these apartments here, and apartment buildings all along here, and kids are having to walk in the street to get to school.
There's no sidewalk on either side?
No.
Would you put it on one side or both sides?
I typically like to put it on both sides, but what we might do in this case is look at a bike trail. Instead of a sidewalk, we would build a bike trail, and what I'd kinda like to look at is over on the east side. Kyle and I have been looking at this area. The one thing that we're gonna have to do, and we've been talking to DOT, is widen the underpass under that bridge.
I think you're on the wrong line. Don't you mean Raleigh over here?
Oh, yeah, right here. So we have some work that will need to be done underneath a bridge in order to make that work, but it's a project that we are looking into.
But you don't know what side of the road you're on?
There is curb and gutter on the west side, but... Where the apartments are. Somewhere, you're gonna have a crossing, and it almost would make more sense to have the crossing over here, because then you could cross straight across, whereas crossing Raleigh Street, there's quite a bit of traffic and no controlled signal. So that's a case where you might just want to do both sides.
Terry, are those apartments that are on the west side of the street, where they constructed after the ordinance that required sidewalks be installed?
I believe so, but let me double-check and make sure.
Okay. Because they'll still have to have sidewalk at some point according to city ordinance.
Right. This might be a case where we end up doing it on both sides. We've been talking about putting a bike trail on the east side and sidewalk on the west side, which would tie almost both trails together. There is sidewalk here. It's a five-foot wide sidewalk, but then you have the Wesleyan bike trail that goes around the Wesleyan. Alright, so let's go to the next one. So the last map that we have is the area east. So right along First Avenue. And then this would be on both sides of the street. And then this is Marshall, Second, and then this is Fourth Street. So basically, connecting some areas and extending some areas.
And Terry, to clarify on First, because we just had that question come up to some city councilors, would that end where our maintenance area ends on that road?
That is correct, because right here is like Calhoun, I believe.
Matty Street?
Matty is over here. Matty's way over here.
It's right where the asphalt and the concrete lineup is where the city...
Probably not. There's not a street there. It's just First Street, and then there's nothing, where those apartments are.
This would be Calhoun.
Actually, before that. It's right before... Our area is right before that farm that's on the north side of the street.
It's where the curb and gutter ends and the different street changes.
Just in case there's someone from the public with name on that one.
So with that, I'll get numbers of all these areas, both assessed and city, and then we could revisit it in a future meeting. Is there any other questions for new areas? Okay, with that, we'll move to the hazardous sidewalk area. So currently, right... And we don't have a map for this. Currently, what we are working on is the west side of town. So the city and hazardous sidewalk is split up into basically four quadrants. The quadrants are split up by Main Street and First Street. Right now, we're really focusing on the west side of town. We've kinda gone through on the first phase and gone through the east side of town and fixed as much hazardous sidewalk as we saw, and this is probably about four years ago. We are now in the process of working on the west side of town. We're really focusing south of Dry Run Creek and west of Sandborne, because we found some areas over in that area by a previous bus tour where sidewalks were really rough in that area. So we're taking a look at that area, but we're also looking at some other areas on that west side that are in rough shape, like big holes or complaints in those areas. So those are the areas that we're looking at right now for marking and sending people a letter to get their sidewalk fixed. If they don't get it fixed and they want the city contractor to do it, then the city contractor will add it to their list. Any questions on hazardous? Alright, and then the last thing was, Kyle wanted me to mention about, if you wanted, we could do a bus tour to try to set up. It would have to be probably now right after 5:00, or we try to do it at lunch or something like that, or we wait and do it in the spring. That's...
The next meeting, daylight savings time, switch back this Sunday at 4:00.
I don't know if it would really... If we want to try to give these people a year's notice, I think we come up with the numbers, both assessment and city portion. We put those together, and we have a bus tour, and we kind of talk about that and have a plan put together, say by spring. That way, we give those people a year's notice.
And so next year would just be hazardous?
Would be hazardous and ADA ramps to meet our federal guideline.
Okay, so if you're not doing any sidewalk next year, we're not using the 2019 budget proposed?
Well, we would need some money for our ADA ramps.
You have a separate budget for hazardous?
We would... What I would like to propose is, so we have money in hazardous, which would take care of the city's portion of hazardous. We could use some of that sidewalk money to put in new ramps where there are none, to meet our federal guideline.
You would probably spend hardly any of this $110,000.
I wouldn't spend a... It'd be a small portion. And what I could do, too, at that point, is we could evaluate the number of ramps that we still have left to put in as part of our plan and come up with a number.
I think it'll be good to get the numbers back, like Steve asked. The concern I have is, I think we did a visual map of, what is it, 35 years to get our sidewalks caught up to code? So I question if... How much of a year we want to lose at all? You know, I mean, I understand we gotta get our hazards caught up, too, but I really want to... You know, I mean, I understand we gotta get our hazards caught up too, but I really wonder if, how much we wanna back off of losing anything, I guess is where I'm sort of leading it, Terry and Kyle.
Okay.
Right now, most of us aren't gonna see our lifetime to get all the sidewalks in Mitchell right now, so, you know, you wanna lose another year of maybe possibly doing some work, I just question, I understand if we can't find the workers, but if we can find the workers and get the pricing out there, I'd really like this to stay aggressive, I guess, and get sidewalks in what we vowed to do years ago, so. Exactly, yeah.
Another question I would have, or possible option, is, does the city have any hazardous sidewalks?
The city does have hazardous sidewalks that will be using our-
I know we've put a lot of sidewalk in around parks-
Yeah.
-within the last few years, but there's probably some sidewalk that's been out there for twenty, thirty years.
I believe we also have a budget line for city sidewalk.
Oh.
I can pull it up here, I'm trying.
Do we use that all?
This line has only been used for that contracted sidewalk that we bid out every, yes.
If we got one guy just doing the sidewalks, is he doing a good job if we just have one better?
He is, he is. The one area that we will be working on hazardous that are on city property is, uh, in front of the senior center. We have, uh, a bunch of hazardous that, uh, we marked, uh, this year. Um, but I got my contractor pretty full, and I don't know if I'll get him there. So, if I don't get him here, there yet this year, he'll be going over there right away in the spring.
Is there a deadline with the, they can't put any sidewalks in, is there?
We usually-
November first or something?
Not, it's temperature-based, so, once the ground temperature gets below freezing, that's when I call it quits. Um, with, with, uh, laying concrete, we could cover and still, uh, feel pretty good. Uh, heated blankets cover with, there's still a lot of ground temperature coming up through, so, we still got time on concrete. But I'm not sure just how much, how much I'll be able to get done with this temperature, which has really gotten a lot of contractors concerned.
Yeah, it looks like twenty thousand dollars in the hazardous sidewalk. Looks like there wasn't anything requested for 2019 for sidewalk for city, but in previous years, we'd had, um, four thousand, eight thousand, um.
Some, but not, not that matches the other.
Right.
And I don't, and I think that's a good idea, Jeff, to try to focus on some of our own, I mean, we're asking our citizens to make sure their sidewalks are right, we better get ours in shape, so, you know, so I, I think that's a good direction also.
You could, if you wanted, um, when we do supplemental appropriations at the beginning of the year, when we reconsider making those budget changes, you could decide how much of that hundred and ten thousand that's budgeted next year for sidewalk to move to that other line, just so that you're tracking it better if you wanted to do it that way. Um, it looks like the last couple of years, 2015, you spent sixty thousand in, um, hazardous sidewalk, twenty thousand in sixteen, fifteen thousand in seventeen, and then there's twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget for eighteen, and as, uh, June, I guess this isn't updated, I can't get an updated quote, it was fifteen hundred dollars spent in there, so, um, we haven't really done much out of there this year either, so if there's money left over in that, I thought you could roll that forward the next year too.
Why don't you get the three-year, or these three, put together with the city part, if there's some hazardous that you wanna add or look at from the city standpoint also, and then get the residential assessment part for each one? And really, so that I, we could look at it and, and mix and match a little bit if we, depending on what we think priorities are, but my question from the, if we wanna get as much notice out as possible, how soon can you come back? Or how soon would we wanna see that to talk about again, like, December, or?
Yeah, December, January.
Yes, I'd, I'd, I'd like to, at least to be in December, so we could send-
Be better if-
By the first of the year, here's what's gonna happen.
And especially for us, for planning in those, uh, reappropriation hearings too, to have council direction would be better to have that ahead of time.
So, the first meeting in, first meeting in December?
Yeah.
Come December, I would have, I, I think we should have an idea what we've spent in sidewalk. Probably not pouring a lot of concrete.
Probably, yeah, probably won't be spending much more, but.
How much, how much notice would that give residents? If we talk about this in December, and April first?
If we bid it and it starts, and the contractor starts in June or July or August?
You still give them six months.
They still have six, seven months.
And technically, those that are on the 2019 plan would have been already notified, but they thought it was happening in 2017. So, everybody that was on his two night, two, twenty nineteen plan had been notified, but we're just a couple of years behind where we thought we were, so it won't be new information to them.
Yeah, the eighteen people were, I, where it was happening by my house this year, I was notified last year. So, I guess, if, if we could look at that and then, and look at it for a December meeting, so then there, if there's any appropriation stuff we need to do, or mix and match, as Susan was talking, um, again, we don't wanna be in opposite ends of the city doing work if we really only end up with one, but, um, that we can look at that and, and it's the updated three-year plan, and, and then maybe we, we can look at two years beyond that. We always gotta throw the, the guesses out, the fourth and fifth type year, we've seen they've, it's a fluid process.
Yeah, yeah.
Not very fixed, so.
Okay. We will get that put together. Is it, can I have a motion to adjourn? Got a motion to second, all those in favor said aye. Post?
Okay, we'll call me in order, start with Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Mayor, council members, guests. I got a little nervous, 'cause the yellow was on my property. And I haven't gotten a letter yet for two thousand, I, I-
You're notified, didn't I?
I think I'm gonna pray for sidewalks. Let's join together in prayer. Gracious God, thank you for today. Thank you for all your gifts. Thank you for this community and for all the folks that live here, and we ask that you, tonight you'll bless these folks, our elected leaders, that they will do their best. Help them to be calm, help them to make wise decisions, and we ask that you keep on blessing all those folks that work for the city, and we ask you to watch over our first responders and keep them safe. And we ask you to put your hand to guidance on all those folks that have suffered from hurricanes and floods now. And we ask that somehow you'll help the rest of the day to be a good day. Give us hope and joy, but above all, give us grateful hearts. And we bring this all to you in the name of your son, our Savior Jesus. Amen. Gotta run, got a prayer service.
Roll call, please.
Sabers. Rice. Doster. McCardle.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Charks. Smith.
Approval of consent agenda items, items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by account city council member for discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items. Is there anything you wish to have removed?
I don't have anything to remove, but I've got a couple of questions. Page fifty-four shows chlorine parts per million. Uh, what's the rate, acceptable range? And maybe you don't have it today, but could we get that for future items? Okay, and then, we have two months' worth of water data, um, what we purchased and the overages, but the chlorine sheet, both page fifty-four and page sixty are the exact same sheet. I'm assuming they were-
Should've been two different months.
Should've been two different months, they're both August. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Did you wanna touch on sales tax?
I did, um, Michelle's got the sales tax collection numbers in your packet. Um, I'm trying to make this so we can all see it better. So, year-to-date, we would be four point nine percent above where we were last year for first and second penny. Third penny, our entertainment tax, we're actually down a little bit from last year. As you know, I've been doing the, um, projection based on what the total taxes collected year-to-date are in comparison to the last fifteen years, just so we can have a better trending. And so, if, and we do know that we have one-time money coming in, um, with performance pets, so when you factor that out, our sales tax would be closer to, uh, flat, to maybe a little bit below where we were last year, um, for the first and second penny. And then, third penny would be, like it shows here, thirteen, point one three percent below. Um, the thing to keep in mind is, when I look, when I show these projections compared to previous years, if you look at last year, the fourth quarter collections last year, we only, we collected twenty-six percent of the, of the total first and second penny in the fourth quarter of 2018. That's the lowest amount that we've ever collected in, in the fourth quarter for the last fifteen years. So, really looking at that last year comparison is really kind of a worst-case scenario, and we really wouldn't be in the hole, because we do have that additional revenue that's coming in from performance pet. But if you were just looking for budgeting purposes, we'd be close, so.
And the thing that I, I also think about is that then in January, we have, we made up for December's-
I think some of those January highs that we saw were really from the performance pet, some of those equipment purchases that have happened throughout the year, so I think-
Have you been able to track that, that, that?
I know they're eighty to ninety percent done, based on the information-
And it's the last January, that was when they were purchasing all of those?
Of eighteen?
Yeah.
Of this year. Oh, this year's, we're eighteen, right?
We're in eighteen.
So, yes, they started in January and continued through this year.
So, you don't think that any of the shortfall, or the, that what we had that was less in the fourth quarter last year was compensated, that was a cutback?
I really don't think so, yeah. Well, that's 'cause we had that big bump in January that we saw, right? But if you look throughout the year, it's, it's went back to flat, so I don't think it really is. And the fact that we have so much more, um, what we were originally anticipating getting from performance pet is lower than what we actually got, so when we first were having the conversation, it didn't make sense to see that big of a jump, but knowing that they're doing double the equipment purchases, I think it did.
Stephanie, for the whole state, it's not quoted, is it flat like this?
Um, no, and actually, I do, uh, um, sales tax comparison across the state, just kind of looking how other cities are doing on a month-to-month basis and keeping track of that. And you can see Mitchell's in here and where the other cities are. I did average them for the entire, um, year-to-date, and this is just the average change per month. And this is not factoring out performance pets, so if you just look at Mitchell, we were at a four point four percent, um, average increase, and you can look at the other cities, there are some that are above us, and then there's some that are below us. And, you know, even if you took, I didn't factor it out on this part, 'cause those other cities are having unanticipated growth too, and that's not comparing to budget, so I think we're, um, in comparison to the rest of the state, doing well, yeah. Yep.
Any other questions? Any other items you wish to discuss?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Mrs. Chark, second by Mr. Allen, further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to address aside these items? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post aye? Oh, I'm sorry, you're in. Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
McCardle.
Aye.
Duster. Rice.
Aye.
Sabers.
Motion carries. Citizens input, if you need to address the mayor and members of city council on an item that is not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken. Does anybody that wishes to address the council?
I've got one item that I'd at least like to make known, and, and, actually, there were two. One was the Jitters Timing, and we've kind of talked about that a little bit, and the other was the Hurst Street status. Is it, is it gonna be done? Do we know from the state if it's gonna be done? And if it's not, um, do we know what will happen out there as far as, uh, temporary access or snow removal, et cetera?
Yes, so, so right now, um, we have been coordinating with the DOT on their weekly progress meetings. The contractor is required to, uh, pave by November fifteenth, so the middle of November, there's a lot of concrete that needs to be put down. So, they were also talking about what is not put down would be temporary asphalt in some sections, so that there would not be gravel base on the roadway. Uh, but we will keep going to the meetings and the progress meetings to coordinate that. Some of the concern is obviously, uh, the boundaries and the, and the curbs and snow removal, so, we'll, we'll continue to work with DOT and try and get those questions addressed.
I have one quick, are the alleys going behind, uh, Fifth Street to Fourth Street and-
Raleigh with Main?
And behind, uh, Jitters area? I've had people ask me how.
The utility area?
Yeah.
So, so right now, the, uh, the utilities are in the ground for Northwestern, still working on some of the borings for the connections to the building. After they have those completed, we anticipate within the next two weeks, is that right, Terry? Where they'll come back and take the poles down, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and get into the alley to put the, uh, concrete back. We're also doing some one drainage improvement toward the Corn Palace Plaza area. But, uh, we think, uh, hopefully, the end of this month, beginning of next month, power poles will be down, and we'll, we'll start completing the rest of the concrete.
I point out that public safety, well, Mr. Croce set up a drone training course. Public Safety now has a drone in their possession that we can use for police surveillance and various other things, and it's open to the city's use, so, there's about twelve people that attended a drone training to go take the licensing exam, so. Hopefully, we'll have some drone operators. Mr. Johnson might be our first here. Uh, the other thing I wanna point out is, we are, I'm working on getting the committee meetings so that they will all be here from now on, in the chambers, so that we can livestream them and, and record them. We're working on that diligently, and I think we've got most of them switched over. I hope Mr. Powell had a couple of his meetings here, seemed to go well.
So, moving forward, even if the cable company is not broadcasting it live at the event, they'll still be able to go to our YouTube channel or to the city's website and replay the video after the fact? Or they can watch it livestream on YouTube?
Anybody else have anything?
Um, yeah, I, I know that he's here for another reason, but I see that Jared Endall is in the audience, and I thought maybe, um, this would be a good opportunity for him to introduce himself. I, I don't know if all of you have had a chance to meet him, but he's our new director of Mitchell Main Street and Beyond, so.
Yes, hello, uh, my name's Jared, um, took a little encouragement from Susan to get me up, but I'm here, so, yes, you'll hear from me earlier or later tonight, so, um, new Mitchell Main Street director, originally from Burke, South Dakota, so a small-town kid from the area, so, yeah, thank you guys for having me.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
Further comments? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Ellerwood?
Alright, Traffic Commission met tonight at six PM with three items on the agenda. The first was a table to request from the July sixteen meeting, uh, is a request for no parking in front of fifteen twenty-nine Country Drive. This item was denied. Uh, next, uh, we had a request to closure of Main Street from Fifth to Seventh, from eight AM to three PM on Friday, October twenty-sixth, for the Corn Palace Mural Dedication. Uh, there'll also be motorcycle parking on Main Street, food vendors, as well as a podium and chairs placed on Main Street for the dedication. In addition, it's requested that no parking in all cars are removed from the street, mentioned above, uh, at three AM on Friday, October twenty-sixth. This item was approved. And the last item, Mitchell Main Street and Beyond, uh, request a parade permit and street closure and no parking for Tuesday, December four, two thousand eighteen, eighteen, for the parade of lights beginning at seven PM. Following street closures and no parking, uh, would begin at four PM on- Following, street closures and no parking would begin at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 4th. Main Street, Railroad Avenue, Ninth Avenue, and Ninth Avenue from Raleigh to Waller. Railroad Street from Raleigh to Kimball, actually, it'd go to the alley, uh, near Raleigh. And then, City Hall parking lot, just north of the Depot, uh, Pub and Grill. And then, float lineup for parade would be at first through Railroad and Main Street, including two blocks east on Railroad and a half-block west on Railroad. And in addition, it was requested that the street lights on Main Street would be turned off at 7:00 PM for the duration of the parade. This item was approved also. We adjourned at 6:05.
Sidewalk Committee met tonight at 6:05. We talked about the existing, um, sidewalk project that's been going on the last couple of years. And then, we went through the next three years of originally proposed five-year sidewalk plan. Talked about coming up with a cost for the city portion and the assessed portion, and the amount of ADA ramps that are yet to come in, and we bring it back at a future meeting.
Move to approve the committee reports.
A motion by Mr. Allen. Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Item 10, hearing on application to transfer retail on-sale liquor license RL 5765 ACT Booking Services LLC. Doing business as Moonlight Bar and Lounge, 511 North Main Street, Mitchell, South Dakota. DeVV Inc., doing business as The Hideout, 510 East Tavon Street, Suite 2, Mitchell, South Dakota. Lyndon, any concerns?
No.
Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Barrington. Discussion? Anybody in the audience wishes to address this one? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for the City Council to recess and sit as the Board of Adjustment. Motion by Mr. Barrington? Second by Mr. Rice? Discussion? Audience? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Item 12, action to set date for Board of Adjustment hearing 11/5/2018. John Lisa Mantel have applied for a conditional use permit, massage, massage business, home occupation at their home located 1206 West Hanson. Legally described as Lot 9, Western Heights Edition, City of Mitchell-Davis County, South Dakota, zoned R3, medium-density residential.
Set the date.
Motion by Mr. Allen, second by Mrs. Charks. Discussion? Is anyone in the audience wish to address this one? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Item 13, action to set the date for Board of Adjustment hearing 11/5/2018. Bill and Pamela Witstruck have requested a front yard zero feet versus 35 feet is required to construct and enclose the front porch at their home at 316 East Hackberry Avenue. Legally described as lots 10 and 11, Block 4 Weaver Square, addition City of Mitchell-Davis County, South Dakota, zoned highway business.
Move seven eight.
Motion, motion by Mrs. Chark, second by Mr. McArdle. Discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to address this one? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Item 14, reconvene as City Council, entertain a motion for the Board of Adjustment. Motion by Mr. Rice.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Barrington. There we go. Um, discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to have comment? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Item 15, discussion consideration of future Corn Palace Festival location. Okay, this one we're bringing to you. Scott, you want to speak to this?
Yep. Scott Schmidt here with Corn Palace. Um, I'll give you a brief history. Since I took the job, we've had three Corn Palace Festivals. Uh, the amount of money that we received from Gold Star Entertainment, um, has went down the last three years. So, um, as advised by our Corn Palace Events Entertainment Board, I took a look back, as far back as our records go, my files. And we've progressively been losing money every year from Gold Star. Our amounts of money that we received back from them have been going down since 2009.
I, Scott, I had a question on this. These aren't, it's not negative 52,000 and negative 51,000.
Nope. No, that's just the height.
Those are positive numbers, correct?
Yes. So, so Gold Star.
But it's gone down from 52 to 42.
We have been losing money, but the revenue has decreased.
Correct. Okay. I got asked if, if these are negative, we, negative numbers.
Positive numbers.
This is not the overall scheme of Corn Palace Festival. It's just the amount of money received from Gold Star.
That we, we, we didn't lose 42,733 dollars.
Correct. Correct. That's how much money they, we received from them.
We received from them.
Correct. So, with our contract, it's based off percentages of money, um, the first $100,000 in sales, and then so on, our percentage increase after that. That being said, when we met with Corn Palace, um, Events and Entertainment Board, we devised a plan due to, um, concerns that were voiced, um, from festival-goers coming and telling us and letting us know that, uh, there were, weren't certain rides coming every year. Um, the rides weren't quality, um, the types of rides that were coming in weren't rides that their kids or, uh, adults were fans of. Um, in response to that, um, there have been, um, every year since I've been here and then going back, there's been businesses on Main Streets that have voiced their concerns of their business front being blocked by certain rides or certain games down on Main Street. With that being said, Gold Star's always typically, since I've been here, appeased those concerns and simply just moved those rides out. With that being said, when those moves, when those rides are moved out, they never bring those rides back due to the fact that they've had concerns. So, over the course of the last 10 to 15 years that Gold Star has been here, those rides have since diminished on the rides that they're able to bring here. On another note, when they come here, they set up all their rides. These concerns happen. They tear them down, they move them. So, coming here, they bring, um, a few more rides than what their contract specifies due to the fact that they know they're probably going to have to move rides or games every single year. So.
They've, they've met the minimum number, but.
Correct.
It could be above the minimum with different rides if they were allowed easier access for setup.
Correct. Correct. I do know that, um, in the summer of 2017, they were one ride short at the minimum. But, uh, we did have Second Street shut down, uh, with a crime scene, and then Third Street was shut down due to the building. So, they did have two side-access streets that were shut down. Uh, so they were one ride short. But, uh, there really wasn't much I could do with that, with, with space. Um, so, meeting with our Corn Palace Events Entertainment Board, um, our thought was, um, two options. Um, one, to either attempt to rebrand, as it's our thought that if we're able to bring in more rides to Corn Palace Festival, that it'll, um, essentially hopefully bring in more revenue for us, more revenue for Gold Star, and in effect, bring in more people to the City of Mitchell, helping boost our economy. The other option is, is keeping the same setup. Stephanie, I think you're on the, you're on the first one, correct, the regular? So, the regular setup would be, um, essentially that we simply support Gold Star when they come here. And when they set up their rides, that, uh, we know, um, I know that we're not going to please everybody. We're not going to please every single business, but the simple fact that Gold Star would come into Mitchell, and they would have this square footage, um, to set up. And, and the way they set up and the way they feel they should set up should best be the, or be in the best interest of them and obviously, um, Corn Palace Festival. Um, when they do have to move things, um, it's tough for them to, uh, come in here and be consistent on a yearly basis, um, with the types of rides, size of rides, that sort of thing. Um, the other option from Fifth to Eighth, um, and I don't think our math is final. We didn't find out until Tuesday that Slumberland was in, uh, I don't know if you want to say in favor, but they, uh, would allow us to use half, and I believe in the correspondence, they said up to three-quarters of their parking lot. Um, speaking with Gold Star, um, they seem to be, uh, more in favor of the parking lot type setup. They can bring in, uh, larger types of rides rather than be, uh, squeezed into a Main Street type setup. But this would, um, be a significant increase in space for Corn Palace Festival with this setup. Mr. Mike Featherstone from Gold Star had told us that we would be able to get in an extra five, six rides, which I feel gives us a really good opportunity to rebrand Corn Fa, Corn Palace Festival. Um, I know there's concerns, um, with certain businesses. Um, I think e- either way that, that, uh, council decides to go with this, uh, we're going to have frustrated business owners. I know that. You know, but there's different avenues. Um, if we move to the north, uh, there may be issues with parking as we're taking up significant parking lots. Um, I can't sit here and try to lie to you and tell you that I have all the answers for parking. But, um, in, in the seat where I'm at, um, any opportunity that we can attempt to increase our business, get more rides here and, and possibly rebrand Corn Palace Festival, uh, that's a benefit to me. So, that's essentially how this came to be. Um, if you have any other questions, you can.
Part of the, part of the reason is also is we ended a five-year contract with Gold Star. So, we're ready to go back into, try to go back into a contract with them, and Scott's intent is to have.
Is there more than one provider other than Gold Star, or that's possible, or primarily?
Um, from everything that I've done research on, this is top-of-the-line. Uh, it's one of the, one of very few, um, amusement, um, providers that actually makes their staff wear uniforms. Um, I, I don't want to speak for him, but I know that in the past, we've had issues with other vendors getting in trouble. Bringing riffraff to Mitchell, if you will, I guess. So, um.
But we're, we're at the point, and the committee is looking at another five-year contract with somebody.
With somebody and preferably Gold Star.
Okay.
Yep.
Scott?
Yep.
If we could have five more rides, how much more money would that mean?
I wa, I was asked that question. I can guesstimate. Um, that's all it would be, is a, a guess. Um, but basing the last nine years, um, if you take the overall money that we receive and you divide it by the minimum 20 rides, this last year, we averaged around $2,100 per ride. So, an extra five to six rides. And that's if, that's if our guesstimate is right, but, or is, is right. But an extra 10 to, you know, 10 to 13, $14,000.
Scott, just for all of our sake, I think it would be ni, nice for you to kind of go through and tell us what your vision is with this layout. We, I think we know what the layout is with the old way, but.
Yep. Um, so, uh, this new setup, starting on Fifth and Main, uh, we would keep our specialty vendors, uh, from Fifth to Sixth. On the Fifth and Main parking lot, we would look at having a beer garden, and that's where our Freedom Stage would be at. Uh, we felt that that would probably be in the best interest of drawing traffic, um, from south to north, or north to south. South having things to do. Um, we were looking in the Northwestern parking lots and having some sort of rides. We didn't really want to separate, but after, um, an assessment, um, I think it's in our best interest to, and I haven't even talked to Lyndon about this, honestly, but, um. So, if I'm wrong, sorry, but having that handicap parking due to the fact that we're taking every handicap spot around the Corn Palace away. You know, and just north of the Corn Palace, we still have to keep, uh, that part of the parking open for our, um, our bus tours and those sound and light load-in for our, for our shows. So, we would probably look at keeping Northwestern all handicap parking.
So, that would be a square foot each off to 104?
Um, mm, off of 104. 104,000, an extra square feet?
Right.
Correct. Correct. Uh, we would keep the food vendors the same from Sixth to Seventh. And then, speaking with Mike Featherstone, we would look at having a children's section or kid rides from Seventh heading east over to Waller and the north half of that parking lot, the street, and then the Pepsi, uh, or the city parking lot. That's just east of the Pepsi Theater. Um, the remainder of the parking lots and street would be, um, I guess we could say the, the, uh, grown-up or adult rides. The bigger rides would be from, um, essentially the Pepsi Theater, just west of that, even into the old Casey's Parking Lot, north, and then into, uh, the parking lot on the east half. And then, the Slumberland Parking Lot would be the bigger rides and, and games and their food, uh, vendors as well.
Scott, is there enough lighting for the, uh, kid rides, uh, just east of the Pepsi, uh, Theater there? Is there enough lighting there? It looks awful dark.
You know, I've never, uh, went in there and checked. I, I believe Gold Star has the ability to bring in temporary lighting. But that's something that, I guess, we'd have to, to look at from Gold Star or a city standpoint, yes.
We have just the regular streetlights on the street there.
Years ago, I had a guy tell me, he was in the machinery business. I had lunch with him last week. And he said 30, 40 years ago, from Seventh Street to, our, from Seventh to 12th, they had machinery there. Says the biggest complaint they ever had was lighting. I know lighting improved in the last 30 years, hopefully, on Main Street. But that's what the biggest complaint was back there about having all their machinery for those five blocks.
You know, with the current setup that we have, we don't have any extra lighting other than, uh, Main Street lights and the rides that are, the light from the actual rides. Um, we don't use any parking lots right now. They do use the Fifth and Main Parking Lot. There was not a complaint, um, in regards to lighting at the Fifth and Main Parking Lot. So, that's the only, um, experience that I have in, in regards to having a ride in any type of parking lot.
What did Gold Star say about this? Like it?
Gold Star was intrigued by the, the Fifth to Eighth. They enjoy, or they would like to have a crack at operating within parking lots. Uh, just the fact that it, it restricts a lot of their ability setting up in, in the middle of the street. But either way, um, I think both of our biggest goals is to, um, have the ability to come in and have them set up the day, the way they would like and, and not end up moving any of their rides, games, that kind of stuff. And, um, I guess I'd.
How quick do they need to know about this?
Preferably sometime soon. I don't know. I mean.
I'm thinking about making a motion to table it for a month because I had a lot of calls today on my phone, like five or six business owners that just found out about it Thursday and Friday.
Yep.
And they haven't had time to digest it. And I think it'd be good probably if we just got a hold of, went down Main Street and polled people and say, you want to keep it the way it is? You want to change it? Because I talked to a lot of them today, and they, some were in for it, some were against it, some weren't sure, some weren't happy that they just found out about it. They want to, uh.
Yeah.
Plus, I know Jeff's going to be gone at the next meeting, and he's on the committee, so it'd probably be good to have him here for the meeting. I'd like to table it for, uh.
And we, uh, we didn't get, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. I think, I think we should probably find some more information out. I think it'd be good to go down to every business owner in town, in Main Street and say, and poll them and see what their views are because they're there 365 days a year.
We've got a lot of business owners that are here.
Yeah, but we don't have them all here.
No, but it would be nice to hear.
Some of them might want to.
It'd be nice to talk to them.
And then, I don't know if you want to talk about too, that with the First through Seventh, the idea was having, um, the west side of Main Street left open for fighting the, for the fire from the side streets, and you would not maintain that fire lane down Main Street.
Correct.
So, just make sure, because there are some businesses on Main Street that, um, we have heard comments from in the past that prefer to have a fire lane going down Main Street, which is not required. And this proposal would say that they'd be on the, coming from the side streets.
Good to leave the, the west side open. Right now, they leave the middle open, correct?
Correct. It's, it's the east 12 feet of Main Street is, uh, how it's been done since I've been here. Moving from, from south to north, north to south, east 12 feet of Main Street is open for the fire lane.
So, that's why you'll see the, the orange shading going to, well, it was supposed to be about to the alleyway.
Yep.
It's as good as my shapes were drawing, kind of poorly on this map. But the west would, you would not have those blocked off because they'd have to be maintained for fire access.
And this has been discussed with the new fire, Assistant Fire Chief, who is okay with leaving the west side open, putting rides towards the middle. Did, uh, was there somebody, Jeff, did you want to address council?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know there are other, uh, people here, I think, on both sides of the issue. If, if you wanted to pick a divisive issue, uh, this is one. Uh, we fought this battle. We fought this battle twelve years ago in 2006. And I'd like to offer a little perspective on it and what's happened. It seems our members are split about fifty-fifty. For a lot of our members, it means a lot of business to them. They do very well, they feel they need it, they want it. We have some other members who say, well, it doesn't really help them, and they just assume not have the inconvenience. The, the main reason to keep, and the reason this really started, and I think it's more true today than a hundred years ago, was that what this does is give our businesses exposure. And in this modern age of increased competition of Walmart, the strip malls in front of Walmart, we have a lot of people who visit Mitchell, and they visit Cabela's in the Walmart area. And they don't, I've had people tell me, I've overheard conversations in Walmart, yeah, well, maybe there's a downtown store has that, I don't know who's down there anymore. I don't go down there. So every time you talk about promoting things, the people talk, well, let's do an event to bring people down, and then they'll see our stores, they'll see our businesses. And, and then there's a long-term, so that's the primary reason. To help our businesses downtown survive. The long-term benefit comes in sales, not necessarily that week. Because you may not want to carry a bag into the Corn Palace show with you, or up and down the midway as you're getting your kids on rides. But those merchants, and I learned this one the hard way myself, after a couple of years of flat sales, doing a coupon or a special, and doing it for the duration. What you need to do is do it for a month, forty-five days out, so that those people come back. They're in your store, you're open at night, you have your lights on, you have a window display, you put up a sign, you give them a reason to come in. I would say those stores who say that they don't do any business during Corn Palace Week are primarily those stores who don't do anything. And I learned that when I ran the State Theater. When I didn't do anything to promote, I didn't do any business. When I promoted, put up signs, distributed coupons on flyers or in the newspaper, however I did it, or at that time there were Corn Palace programs, I had an increase in business, I brought new people into my business. So the, certainly the bars and restaurants, I think, want to keep it in the area. They do a very good business on it. Some of them won't be affected either way. Kiki and I think Colley at the scoreboard, they're gonna be fine. But we have some of the others at the south end of town, who you're taking a, something away from them. The real problem started, and adding a little perspective to this. It was about, and I served on the Corn Palace Committee back in the early 1980s and went through this. And I can explain some of the ups and downs of the revenues. But when Mike Featherstone at Gold Star Amusements came in, we had had several operators over the years. When Gold Star came in, he immediately, for, prior to that, for, you know, sixty, seventy years, the operators had put their tents and their games and their rides in the middle of the street. There was a fire lane on both sides. And the tents or the trailers were backed up, back-to-back, facing outward, facing towards the businesses on each side. You had a nice walk up one side and down the other. In those days, the fire department or police department even painted fire lane in the parking lane. So people would walk on the sidewalk, and they would walk up the parking lane and the fire lane. And the businesses benefit. Mike Featherstone had an idea that he told us in a meeting twelve years ago, you can't run a carnival nowadays, I need an alley down the middle. And I want my business, my tents, my attractions on each side of it. I don't want the distraction of these other businesses. And so he sealed off, he put the backs of his trailers, think of the Fun House and the Mears and those things, right up to the curb line. So some of them were even blocked from the sun. But that was his theory, that he was eliminating competition or distraction from the businesses. But the businesses are the guys who are here every day of the year, who are paying the taxes. And the idea of this, of the festival a hundred years ago, was a harvest festival to bring people to town to buy things, and to get to know our stores. And Mike thumbed his nose at the stores. Now, he's been cooperative about moving rides and doing what he could. But he faced those things inside. That's when the stores saw a drop in business. That's when there was a lot of animosity between Mr. Featherstone and the store owners. I, I think his, and I think it is time to tell Mr. Featherstone that he's coming into our living room, our house, our town, and he can, he should abide by our rules. If you compare Corn Palace Week to the State Fair or to the Sioux Empire Fair, there are other distractions. There are local vendors at the State Fair, service clubs and businesses who set up buildings and are competing with the carnival vendors and rides and food vendors. So the idea of eliminating the competition, I think, is an out-of, out-of-reason request to do it. One of the big improvements we've had, some businesses have had problems with using the bathrooms. I always open my bathrooms. I even opened the State Theater specially during Corn Palace Week and those things. And my staff will tell you, I go in and clean up the bathrooms. And if it's vomit or whatever it is, I can put on latex gloves and clean anything. And I've done it, and I do it. I'm not afraid to get my hands dirty. And I run more people through my bathrooms in one weekend than any retail store in downtown Mitchell does in a year. So I don't have sympathy for that. But the porta-potties have been a big help. Thank you for putting them up, we've got more of them, they're modern porta-potties, have hand washing stations, they're terrific. We are in favor, and we definitely want to see the revenue. And I understand that, and from my years on the committee. The carnival is the one consistent moneymaker. Our shows may go up or down, the carnival is always a moneymaker. It's still a moneymaker, albeit a smaller amount. We also can remember at one time, Corn Palace Week was traditionally one week, seven days, the last full week in September. And the early advertising from those days, that's, that's easy to remember, isn't it? First, last full week in September, Mitchell, come to Corn Palace Week. We at one time expanded it to use two weekends, and it was nine days. And the carnival went nine days. Because we said if we're bringing in expensive entertainers, we aren't all farmers anymore. We have jobs, we have to be up at work the next morning. We aren't going to drive from Sioux Falls to Mitchell to come to a show Tuesday or Wednesday night. So we used the two weekends for our expensive entertainment. The carnival was here more days, everyone's revenue went up. Over the years, it's been cut back. The carnival is now, or the festival is now four to five days, as far as, as our shows and so forth. So depending how far back you go, you're gonna have some decrease in that. Some of the complaints on the rides that we don't have have been kitty rides. The kitty rides are rather small, they don't make a lot of noise. I don't know why he wouldn't bring enough of them and set them up. But I, I think a lot of the problems can be solved if in the negotiations, I'm glad you're renegotiating the contract, and in this five-year contract to say, you need to put the attractions back-to-back in the center of the street, face both sides, don't cut off our businesses who are paying the taxes. We're in favor of extending and expanding. Whether or not north of Eighth Street works, I don't know. And I don't know if it's been considered to go south of First Street. We have one more block, and the huge city parking lot, probably bigger than all these others, that is pretty much even during Corn Palace Week underutilized. So we could set more rides in that area, and I would suggest you using that. Admittedly, that would require people having to follow traffic lights and cross the street. Because it'd be hard to close off First Street along with Fifth, and keeping Seventh open. But I think it's something we can look at. I can remember quite a few years ago, as a kid, it, Corn Palace Week did used to go south of First Street, down the railroad. And matter of fact, that's where we redeemed our Colhain's Milk Tabs for free ride tickets. I, I do think too, a big part of the solution, and, and we're in favor of solutions is, we're in favor of extending and expanding. But I think we want to be careful with it, and I wouldn't just move it and to pick up parking lots. I would also question if we've talked to the folks at TMA and Graham Tire, are they in favor of it?
We've talked to, well, I've talked to every business other than the Pepsi Theater. The second setup or the possible new setup does not block TMA.
Okay.
Albeit, he's not in favor of it. ABS was all right. Mr. Smith, I think I'm speaking all right, that Core Trust was all right with it. Slumberland is all right with it, they're granting us their parking lot. And then Graham was, was not.
Okay. So you know-
ACT did say that they had concerns for parking.
Yeah. And they do do some shows during Corn Palace Week too. So at any rate, the, I, I think the idea to have a point person, and be it Scott or whomever, who, no one should be, none of our merchants should be calling Mike Featherstone directly and saying move the ride or making requests. It should go through a point person, whoever that is, if it's Scott, whomever. And we just ask, work with us ahead of time, let's get a plan, let's have it down. We know what rides are gonna be where. And if we need to adjust next year, we can plan that. I think that would be a better way to do it. The other thing, Mitchell Main Street and beyond is ready to work with the Corn Palace Committee and Scott in planning and positioning, but also in promotion. So that we can help our merchants, and we've done this in the past, both as a chamber and now Main Street, where we've set kits, where we had ready-made posters that you could fill in what you're doing as far as hours or specials, buying combined advertising, and getting packages from the media. So I think, you know, we want to make Corn Palace Week better for the city, and also for our member businesses, and, and non-member businesses even who benefit. So, yeah, I agree that, please, stall it for some, some time, that we have time to really survey everyone, get more input, and, and work out some of the, the problems. The basic one comes down to the way Gold Star has positioned their private alley to antagonize and block out our merchants. If we can overcome that one, I don't think we're gonna have the resistance. So thank you for taking some time to consider it. And I know there's others here who may want to speak, so be available for questions.
Anybody else wish to address it? Mr. Goldammer?
Hello, Tim Goldammer from the Erie Community Theater and the Pepsi Cola Theater across the street here. I was asked on behalf of the board to just read the following statement. We'd like to start by thanking Scott and all the people involved in trying to come up with solutions for this difficult situation and making the best carnival possible. They made sure I called it the Carnival. They thought that might be a great new rebranding. We can appreciate the difficult nature of planning this event. We fear with the new current plan, that the parking lot behind our theater space is blocking off our loading dock on the corner of Seventh and Lawler. Specifically, there's no space, place designated for entrance, for vehicles dropping or loading in or out equipment. The theater has found success in bringing artists during the time of the Corn Palace Festival. These artists have not by any means been top-charting recording artists, but have been rather impersonators of such characters as Elvis Presley. Joseph Hall has succeeded in coming year after year. This last fall was his third year back to the Pepsi Cola Theater during Corn Palace Week. And his numbers continue to stay steady at around two to two fifty. This artist brings revenue not only to the Corn Palace Festival as people come before and to stay after to go down Main Street to enjoy the food, beverage, and events going on. Further, we also were very concerned about parking because also north of Seventh and Lawler, on the adjacent block where there's not designation for any use currently for the actual rides. A lot of the carnival employees use that space to park RVs and other vehicles that they sleep in. And so we fear that if that's not taken into consideration, you're thinking you're having all this parking available, that's not actually available. We also were concerned about the lights in our parking space or the parking lot behind the building that we use. And the only thing that I will add outside of the community theater's input was as a Lyft driver, I would say, close all the parking lots, just take lifts down, and we'll make sure that everyone gets taken care of. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address council?
As the Main Street Director, the board did not take a position on this issue. Info was sent out last Wednesday and again on Friday of the potential changes. With the opportunity and encouragement for every business to come and speak tonight, regardless of side. Any commitments or comments that I did receive, I did pass on to Susan. And again, I'll just finish with any extra time that we could have. We will definitely poll all of our business, whether you're a member or not. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't know if you, Jared, were you hoping that I would tell what those positions were? I think both of them were against, were in, against keeping it. They wanted to move it, both of the ones, am I right, Jared, as I recall?
I did get a phone call from the archery store that's on Main Street, and they were not able to come tonight, but they wanted me to forward that they're opposed to the carnival staying on Main Street. Where it is, they'd like to see it moved, because they said it's such a busy time for them.
What's the timing for the Corn Palace Committee and making the decision on the next, on who the amusement provider's gonna be?
We were planning on addressing it at our next meeting, which is, it'll end up being November 13th as we have a prior commitment in the Corn Palace, November 6th. But November 13th will be our next meeting. That's when I, that's when we'd ideally like to make this decision.
So we have a November 5th meeting before that?
Is it November, November 5th, Tuesday?
I'm sorry, November 4th.
I'm sorry. It's the second Tuesday of the month, but we'll be moving it one week later.
Right, November 5th is Monday.
5th is Ma, okay.
I believe November 13th is-
Well, I'll just make a couple of comments. I'm the liaison to the Corn Palace Entertainment Committee. And we're not trying to make this difficult. What we're trying to do is, is make sure that, that we do have a very nice event and people in the community support it. We're not gonna get a hundred percent regardless of what direction we go. But we, but I think Kevin had a very good comment. Tonight, first of all, there was gonna be no decisions made anyway. And because it was only on it for discussion. And that's what we want, is input. And I've had a lot of people already contact me. Most of them were in favor of keeping it where it's at right now, for various reasons. But of course, there's again, others that, that would, would like to see it moved. But I, the most, the comments I've got were people both on the north side and the south side of Main Street said, keep it where it's at. So again, if we do decide to keep it on, on the locations where we're at, I think we need to do a better job on communicating. And we've all agreed to that of, of this is what, work with the Gold Star, if that's who we're gonna end up selecting, and get the layout, and maximize the amount of rides that we can have regardless if we go north or south. That, that is ultimately the goal, is to get a better carnival. And, and we're gonna have to have some cooperation in doing that. So I, I think this is a good process. Because, you know, if, if we see that number go down to twenty thousand, it's too late. Now's the time to act, and now's the time to kind of put some things together and, and try to work together. And, and see if there is whatever issues that are out there, at least be able to talk about it. And if nothing else, explain the reasonings behind it. And then that way, at least giving people an opportunity to voice their opinions, if they agree or disagree. So I think this is gonna be good, this next thirty days of visiting with individuals, getting their viewpoints. You know, it's, again, it's not gonna be a hundred percent. Dan, you lived through this, and know it's, it's very difficult. And, you know, we, we need to do a better job, I think, with the carnival. And we're not gonna be able to do that without Gold Star cooperating with us also. So, or, or again, whoever we end up selecting. The one thing I do know is, and everybody can agree, we do remember the last carnival that was in town that had some, that Lyndon got to know a little bit better as, as the week went on.
They were good customers.
They were very good customers, yes. And we don't, we don't ever want to get back to that type of situation. You know, we, right now, we are working with a good company, but I think there's ways to improve it. So we'll give it a shot, and again, we'll, we'll work together on it. And I don't know if we've got the, the meeting set up exactly. We were gonna have it the sixth, and that's election day- We, we were going to have it the 6th, and that's Election Day, and so we might be moving the Corn Palace Committee meeting, but there might be some people that want to come and at least visit. So, we'll get that publicly out there so they know, and it's going to be in this room regardless of what day it is, and so then they can come in. And then I think the second meeting in November, we're going to need to start making some decisions because we don't want to let this get too far past us, and then, and then we've got to be scrambling in the end. But I think the communication is probably the key to this whole thing, and that's what we're going to try to improve upon.
I would bring it to your attention also. If additional lighting is required in any of these lots, now's probably one of the better times we've ever had. We just got approximately, I think there's a dozen light systems off South Burr that the city just retained on this project that could easily be replaced in any of these lots. So, if you're ever looking for some, now's exactly the time. Come at a better time, so.
I've had a couple, a little loud here. I have a couple of real strong ones that wanted it to stay where it's at, but I've had many, many wanted it moved. The people that rent hate it on where it's at. Their apartments are up above. The small businesses, I've had two of them that tell me they close because it affects, there's nothing, they better off closing and take it off. But then I also had one today tell me that it helps his business. But I haven't found a renter that don't absolutely, or his apartment renter, that don't absolutely hate it. Because, you know, their apartment's on Main Street, they're overlooking, can't sleep, they've got to go to work, whatever. And I've had mixed, mixed comments coming into me.
Scott, can we dictate to Gold Star or whoever, the way they position the, not rides, but the other venues that, that don't have their back to the businesses, that they're open to the business? You know, what they brought up earlier, it sounded as though the people that, business owners, operators are more opposed to getting, like shut off to what's going on than anything. Can we dictate to Gold Star, turn around?
I don't believe it's currently via contract that we can do that, but it's going to be your call on, on what you want to dictate in the contract. I'm not comfortable telling somebody how they can and can't set up when they're here to run their business for five days. They're in it as well. I feel we've got a first-class organization coming in here and running festival. I agree, I think we need to, we need to expand and possibly, you know, attempt to rebrand festival, but it's going to be your call. But personally, I don't feel comfortable telling anybody how to run their business when they're coming in here and then allocating this amount of money to us. We've noticed the hit, they noticed the hit, and fortunately, the state sales taxes increased over the last 10 years, so sales taxes have been somewhat steady. I believe we bring in about $10,800 this last year in sales tax. But if this trend keeps going down, we'll be losing out on money, they'll be losing out on money, and then we'll be losing out on sales tax as well. So, the one thing I will say, I, I don't disagree that it probably hurts downtown businesses, but when I talk to Mike Featherstone, he prefers to set it up as though you're in a shopping mall and you have rides that he brings in on both sides, similar to how Main Street's set up. So that's essentially why he prefers to set up like that. But, you know, if that's the direction that, that council wants to give me, I can attempt that, but I don't know what kind of feedback I'm going to get from him. And, you know, when they're bringing in this type of money, knowing the type of deficit that the Corn Palace is in, I'm not sure I'm comfortable telling him that he needs to go a certain way and we could potentially lose out on, on more.
I think we've got to be business-friendly with the businesses that are here 365 days a year, though. We've got to take care of our own, and I just think we should, like I said before, I think we should poll all the businesses and see what, what, you know, 50/50, or if it's 60/40, or whatever it is, and we've got to look out for our own people on Main Street because we can't afford to lose anymore.
And I, I talked to Jared, two, three weeks ago, I believe, we had a meeting, and we had discussed, we have a flyer that goes out that talks about the rides that are coming in, the entertainment that's coming in, it's got our sponsors on there, and I talked about to Jared, it goes out four or five times in the Daily Republic, we have it all over Mitchell, about potentially putting Main Street business coupons in the flyer, and that goes out the entire summer. The downfall, I will say, is that we have several businesses that stated earlier that aren't open that week. So, it's, you know, how do you differentiate between who should receive that coupon, who shouldn't? I'm all for downtown business, but at the end of the day, you know, I feel it's in my best interest to look out for the Corn Palace budget as well. So, maybe stuck between a rock and a hard place, but that's my opinion, and I've talked to Jared about, you know, how we can potentially help the downtown businesses as well. So I don't know if there's a, a meet in the middle type of scenario, but we'll attempt to get there.
And I, I guess the only thing to keep in mind is that the city doesn't have complete say on the contract because there's two parties that would be, you know, have to be agreeable to it, so they'll always have the right to say no to.
And I think it could be part of the negotiation. And just bringing up that, that when I was on Corn Palace Committee in the 80s, and that's before we had, had a director and we had to do everything, each of us had a portfolio. And Bill Malumbi was a guy who was in charge of the rides and positioning, and everyone got the request into him, he worked with the carnival operator, and he did dictate, and I, I don't think it's unreasonable, and there is a precedent for doing that. But, and then Bill took the heat, and now we have Scott, and he's paid to take the heat. But, but we did negotiate with him, and Bill did dictate this will be here and this will be here, but it was done in consultation with, so it would work out. And, and Mike has been responsive in, the first year he was here, he had generators parked on Main Street, and they were loud trucks and so forth. And he did move them, and of course, there's cord length and, you know, wiring and all that. There are considerations. So, it does have to be a give and take, but we did specify with the previous operators, Murphy Shows and whoever it was over the years. So, I, I think there's definitely a precedent for us to do that.
One last thing, I just want to just mention a couple of comments, and I did have a few call myself also, and not a lot yet, I'm pretty sure we're going to get a lot more over the next few weeks, but so far where I'm sort of at is the ones that, they want to keep it where it's at. They like, they like the notion of being first through Seventh Street. What more it sounds like is our Corn Palace Festival needs to get bigger, obviously, from, from entertainment values. I don't ride rides, but I still have kids in my family, I have young kids that do a lot of riding, and, and they've came back home and said that they're, they're bleak compared to the days back when we used to run down there and stuff like that. And when I walk down, down Main Street too, I can see that the rides have obviously minimized, and there's not near as much, and I understand what Gold Star may be doing and their process. And it sounds like we definitely need to get bigger. I don't know if necessarily the change of, of eliminating where we're at, besides maybe trying to find a way to expand. And expand if it's going across First Street, obviously, everybody's concerned. Steve mentioned, I think it was earlier, something he did about, well, how do we get across First Street? And Jeff Logan said, well, we've got to get across First Street, we've got people, we've got to follow traffic lights. We've got to follow traffic lights every day. Obviously, we don't want to put more people in risk, but you've got to keep in mind the turning lanes will be shut down at that time, where you could put maybe additional signage in those turning lanes, slowing traffic down that come across First Street, people can get over to the other side. Now, we have two big parking lots down there, not saying John Foster would be a fan of having someone down there. He might be thinking the other way around because people can't get into his business, but it is a way to get some of those bigger rides, maybe going that direction is, is a way we've got to take a look at, and those businesses down there, they might be in favor of it. And it'd definitely open up a lot more amusement rides to bring in, and it would also keep them in that same location from First to Fifth kind of thing, instead of trying to separate the two entities and keep what we have in front of the Corn Palace, our Corn Palace area where it's got the food vendors and, you know, other retailers that are down there. But I don't know if moving is the right answer. Obviously, like Jeff said before, we're never going to satisfy 100%, sadly to say. We'll do our best to work for the business, but it sounds like our problem is we're not big enough, and we need to find the room to expand, and necessarily move it a whole lot, but let's get bigger.
And I will add, not negating the, the exact setup, but the last three years that I've been here, the east half of Main Street has been open for Fire Lane. So, Gold Star necessarily didn't set up with back-to-back facing the businesses. They basically had two layers of games or rides facing essentially east, and the entire walkway on the east side was typically wide open where the games and rides, that kind of stuff was. So, I think it's essentially just trying to find a middle ground to where, how Gold Star would like to set up, if we can meet a middle ground of how any Main Street businesses or Mitchell Main Street and beyond would like us to set up. But I think we need to find some common ground, and we need to be very consistent with our letting Gold Star know what they have. Been very inconsistent. They come here with 23, 24 rides, not sure which ones are going to be able to set up. Therefore, our marketing campaigns, you know, our idea would be able to, if that flyer, send it out and say, all right, here's where your kid rides are going to be, here's where your adult rides are going to be, here's where this is. So if you want to park on Second Main, or if you want to park on Seventh Main, you have an idea of where you want to go. But we have no consistency right now with the way we're functioning.
The way we decide will be for five years.
Correct.
Is our goal.
That's one of the comments I was going to make, and I know Scott had that conversation both with the mayor and the Corn Palace Board, but it, it would be nice to be able to just say, these are the, this is the space available, this is what we're working with for the next five years, so you're not just trying to decide at the last minute which rides will stay and which will go, and that'll help Gold Star plan better and bring the rides in that people are asking for.
As I look out, I see some, some store owners here, and I'm just so curious, because I, I see a lot of successful store owners, so I'm curious about what your opinions are on this. Would you rather not say? Would you rather remain silent? I mean, just, I was just curious, I just, you know, would be interested.
Way to put peer pressure on everything.
Got to get them up here somehow. Well, I'm Brad Jamison, Wolfle Jewelry. I don't know how successful I am, but I like to think I do okay. Anyway, my whole take on the whole thing is, is Gold Star's as a company, I've been here 35 years on Main Street, and the first company, which I love those folks too, we do business with both of them, but Gold Star is by far the better of the two. They're clean, friendly, they're my vote, hands down. As far as being on the Mitchell Main Street, my take on this is, I believe it's there, it should stay there. It does help us in advertising, you know, as far as it gets a lot of people there, they see my big sign, you know, it's, it's hard to advertise nowadays. I was just having a thought while everybody was discussing this, what if, because I know Mike, Mike's, he's kind of a buddy of mine, they've got a lot of rides. Maybe go from First to Fifth with maybe the kitty rides. And he could expand, and I think he's got the wherewithal to go further if that's what we choose to do. It would actually almost double in size, I think it would help maybe both parties. It was just a thought I had had, because I, I know he's got a lot of equipment, I talked to him on the phone today, which is kind of a crazy thing, but he's going to make me this little cherry deal to put in my backyard. I've got four and a half grandkids now, so I'm all excited, you know, and I'm going to be able to spin a little spinner, and it's going to go in a circle. So, he's going to make one of these for me and a couple of other of his friends and things, so.
Where are the adult rides or the bigger rides?
Where would they be located? I would say further north, if that's where the space has to be. Because I realize, as you get a little bit older, you want a little bit more of an exciting ride than maybe he's able to down here. I don't know, I remember back in my day, they had the Buzz Bombs, and, you know, bigger rides, I, I get that. But here's another take on the whole thing, too, is as, back in my day in the 80s, we didn't have all these other things like, we didn't have Nintendo, we didn't have the internet, we didn't have any of that kind of stuff. We had three channels to watch on TV, so we were looking for something to do. My son, he's 28, has Chase Jamison, you know, middle school band director, good boy. But his real big interest wasn't running down on Main Street and riding rides, and that's six years ago, you know, when he was still in high school. His buddies went and did the Nintendo thing, and they went to the little house parties and stuff. So, I realize you're going down in attendance probably, but there's other reasons than just, you know, putting it out here, putting it here. It's the kids that were available to do for them away from the Main Street. So, you know, that's kind of my take on it, I don't know, good or bad, but I kind of like where it's at now, it gives me exposure. Exposure's difficult to buy nowadays. Not as many people read the newspaper, we all have XM radio, you know, all those things work against a business owner. So to have everybody downtown, you know, by the droves, it's kind of nice. So, but I, you know, I realize it's a business and, you know, that has to count. Plus, I think having a shorter venue, there's only four days this year, you know, I happen to be in the hills, but it wasn't very long, there wasn't a lot of opportunity, people rush right down there, and their kids get, you know, a week and a half worth of a $20 wristband, they had four days. A lot of parents probably for that $50 said, you know, we'll wait for the state fair. Maybe we've got to lengthen it a little bit, you know, rather than shorten it. I don't know. Anyway, that's my take, so.
So, good luck, yeah. Good luck.
Well, it's been some great discussion, and that was our whole point, I think, in having this tonight, is have some discussion and get some ideas. Does anybody else want to address this before we button it up? Okay. I, I'd like Mitchell Main Street to be honest, they would, to survey their members and, or the businesses on Main Street, see what we come up with.
He's not in your house.
Oh, I can't, you're right behind her, so.
I was just briefly going to say, I mean, I can do a survey monkey, I've had experience doing, doing those in the past, so that's definitely an option. I've even asked Jeff if we've ever done a mail-out as well, and we've done that before, so either, either or.
As old as I am, do we allow monkeys in town?
That's a good question, I'll have to ask him.
Good, thank you. We don't let pigs in town, so. Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody, for your input.
Where are we? Item 16, action on res, did anybody else have anything to address council-wise? So we're going to bring it back in a month.
Just for clarification, that'll be the second meeting in November?
Yes. There are some council members that won't be here for the first one, so. Okay. Item 16, action on resolution number R2018-53, authorize the quiet title action. That's back at us, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, so last meeting, I had asked you to table this agenda item in the hopes that I would have a better answer for you at this meeting. Turns out, I don't. So, instead of trying to, you know, have the council, have the council table this possibly again, what I'm asking you to do is just authorize me to proceed with, with what's necessary based off the further research that I can conduct. I, I can already tell you, I've made it through part of it, and it looks like for that part, it, it doesn't look like the city's going to have a claim in it, and that'd be the, probably the far, further north part. So at the very least, we're going to have to have a revision of the survey that was previously provided for that part, and possibly for, for other parts there too. I, I can tell you that the city's got a claim to at least part of it, so I know that there, there's going to be some kind of legal action that's necessary. It's just, there, there's been so much to dig through, and I, I have not had time to do it since the last meeting, but we're, we're partway there. I can tell you that there's going to need to be a change, I just don't know what that change looks like right now.
At, at least a month, more?
I, I think I can get the, the rest of the research, I can make it through the rest of the title records probably within the next week or so. As far as revising the exhibits and stuff like that, I don't know how much longer that process would take. And then if you're talking about how long it would take to get through the court action, that's probably going to be three, three months at the shortest, and that's if nobody contests any part of it.
So, the, Justin, the ultimate goal then is, is to make for sure we find an owner, and, and, and we need to somehow secure it, and then at that point in time, it's not that the city needs to own this land, but we need to, we need to get to the bottom of who actually does, so there's a possibility of selling it, or seeing if neighbors want it, or whatever the case may be.
Correct. Yep. So, I mean, it, it's not that the city wanted to have all this land so that we could do whatever we wanted with it, it's just, we need to have, we need to know who owns what, and whether the city owns this or that, I, I don't think is going And whether the city owns this or that, I don't think is going to have a huge impact. The only real part that the city really cares about is a little bit of an alley that's been there for who knows how long. But the rest of it, I don't think it makes a huge difference whose it ends up being, it's just, we need to figure out whose it is.
So are we looking for some action here that we authorize you to take care of that, Justin?
Yeah, if you want to approve the resolution, that's basically just giving me the authority to move forward with whatever legal action ends up being necessary.
I move approval of the resolution, twenty eighteen dash fifty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Chark, second by Mr. Allen. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Oh. Anybody out there want to address this one? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Item seventeen, action on resolution R twenty eighteen dash fifty-four, a plat of lot six-seven B, lot, or block seven of Westwood, first edition on subdivision of southwest quarter of section sixteen, township one oh three north, range sixty west of the fifth prime meridian, city of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota.
Mayor and council members, this plat was presented to the planning commission at their last regular meeting and would recommend approval, just so that you can get your bearings straight, you can kind of see on that aerial. Basically, my understanding is what the owner of the property, or they want to memorialize the property line, some of it is platted, or if you saw on the plat where some of the lots are in there, and some of it is not, is not platted. So basically, this is to square off the property there, because you can kind of see on the east side where there are some lots, so this is just kind of encompassing the whole thing. So the rest of it is implatted on the west side, so. And you can kind of see where this bearings are, there's a couple buildings that have been built since that Google map is there, so.
This got passed by the planning commission, five to zero, I believe. Move approval of resolution twenty eighteen fifty-four.
Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. Allen, further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this one? You're going to let her go, huh?
So when you say that it's going to be memorialized, you just mean that we're just squaring it off, and nothing, we're not saying what's going to go in there, anything else?
We consider it housekeeping, we've got three lots over there, and then four buildings that aren't planted, so this will just put one plot around all of it.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Item eighteen, action on resolution number R twenty eighteen dash fifty-five, creating sidewalks, snow and ice, special removal areas.
With all the, all the times that we've talked about sidewalks, snow and ice removal, I probably don't need to say much tonight. Really, all I'd be looking for from the council is to fill in that one little spot in the resolution, saying what the council deems the public purpose being served is.
Well, our discussions, and I'll just tell it to you as a layman, and you can put it legally then.
I'll do my best.
Obviously, the area that I was at, or live, is, once, it was a bike path, and the bike path was put in, the very next snow event, the city was out cleaning the snow, and has done ever since. Some had easements, some did not, and, and so what we're trying to do is do a contiguous, and just keep continuing to do what we're doing in, in the area out on Olmwood Mountain. Again, I know it's difficult to probably put that in words, but in all reality, is, is we're not changing anything today than what we've done the last ten to fifteen years that we've had the bike path out there.
And I believe the resolution, this map sets the resolution areas, does it not? There's, the green is what you're talking about.
Right. And that's what I thought we were getting to, is, is being able to show the map.
Yes, and then there's some areas down in the southern part.
So this is the special designated areas by the lake, which would be the bike, I don't know if this is all bike path out here?
That's all bike path, yes. And then along Seventy, Twenty-third Street, commonly known as Seventy-Eight. And then, yes, the Minnesota, in front of Vantage Point, down by Innovative, and then it moves down towards Cadwell Park, some area the city actually owns.
So I don't know, did you put something in that was previously maintained by the city, and the reason the council decided to, to put it on the map?
I mean, I can try to, well, I can come up with a way to say that you're trying to preserve a prior city practice, but I think it comes back to, why were we engaging in that practice in the first place?
So are you trying to go back to your earlier discussion, what I heard council saying when this first came up, is that these were primary areas for people either around the lake or coming into town? I don't know if your thoughts have changed on that, but a lot of the discussion, I, at least when it came to Burr, that I heard you saying, was that this was a primary area, people coming into town. I don't know if that's still, and I don't know if that meets the criteria that Justin's looking for. But you have two different areas identified on the map, the one is going to be the Lake Gulf special removal area, and then the other one being Burr.
Can't the maps be used to set the resolution, the areas showing on the maps?
Yeah, I guess that's what you're approving, it's the reason of why you're approving it.
Oh, I see what you're looking for, you're looking for, the printsies there, gotcha. Well, and Steve, you brought this up from the very beginning, as we were maintaining the right-of-way, and, and we were told that after the project was done, we were going to continue to, in an unwritten agreement, that that's what we were, we committed to it, and so again, I'm going back to a precedent of what we have set in the past. Right or wrong, that's, that was our decision. I don't know, Steve.
I, and Justin, I'm trying to think of what, I guess the purpose that the city is maintaining these is to maintain public safety. The choice of why we're picking these is up to the council, based on the new resolution. And we could designate some other sidewalk someplace to maintain, also based on the resolution. So to me, the insert city council justification is to maintain public safety. We were maintaining the right-of-way on Burr Street before the state project, and will continue to maintain the right-of-way on Burr Street after the state project. The fact that sidewalks got put in is, is a non-issue. Based on the ordinance that has been brought up, the council can designate areas in the interest of public safety for snow removal, that the city will maintain. And so the city is designating these at this time, for whatever reason the council feels is adequate. The reason of the ordinance doesn't come into play, that's what the council is elected to do, based on the new ordinance that we passed. It might not meet other legal type things, but as long as the ordinance allows the council to set those, the council can set them. And I would put it for public safety of snow removal.
And I can tell you, I think public safety is going to be a legitimate public purpose. I think the question that you're going to have to ask is, is this a rationally related means of accomplishing that purpose, when you're specifically choosing this area over this area?
I understand your, I understand your comment, but that's the council's decision.
Right, I'm just trying to tell you what I'm going to have to defend if this ever gets challenged.
I'm, I'm in favor of this, and, but I'm going to put it out there right now, I will be abstaining on this vote, because it includes my place of employment.
Just for clarification, did everyone understand that on the map, the green areas are just the special removal areas, there are other areas in there that the city would already be required to maintain?
Those are city-owned properties.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Cadwell Park, yeah, Cadwell Park.
And like underneath the interstate overpass, in the area where there's two sidewalks, because the one closest to Burr, we'd be required to maintain.
And out by the lake.
You're off. Your microphone's off.
Out by the lake, there, it looks like there's a spot, the city already maintains it, that kind of goes across the inlet.
Yep, I know where you're talking about.
Yeah, it's public right-of-way.
And it's not, it's not that it's not going to be, but the city already does that.
Right. Because that's in city right-of-way.
Correct, so the.
The other thing this does is it clears up some of the, there were some areas where we had agreed, it clears up, what's, I don't know how to put this, we had agreed to some, what, that's where I'm looking for.
Some of them that had easements and some that didn't.
Yes, thank you, easements. We had some that were easements, and some that were not clearly called out as easements, just clarifies that also.
And I'm really just pointing out that the green areas are only the special removal areas, for those that might be listening online or in, in the, on TV, I know the council's had plenty of discussion about that, but especially because there's been so, so much discussion on the Burr Street, I just wanted to make sure that when you're only seeing the one area, it's because, ah, those notes are crazy. Sorry about that, I didn't know they were on there. That over here, we have another sidewalk, but the city's already required to maintain that, so I just don't want to get calls from those businesses tomorrow wondering why we didn't do both, or why we aren't going under the interstate, I'm just making sure everyone's aware that these are just the special removal areas.
Sorry about all the comments popping up. So I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution, resolution number twenty eighteen dash fifty-five, and insert for public safety as the city council justification's comment.
Motion by Mrs. Chark.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Is there anybody in the audience which is to address this one? Our audience is rapidly dwindling. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. One app extension. Motion carried. Item nineteen, second reading, adoption of the amended MCC, oh, excuse me, ordinance O twenty eighteen dash twelve, amending MCC chapter two, six, tax increment financing.
Nothing new on this one, next up will be developing the guidebook.
I do need to report, I did receive a comment from the county requesting that, that they have the ability to participate in the review process, and I said, I didn't think we'd have any problems sharing the applications that come in, and, and letting them provide comment for that group to look at on those applications as they come in. If anything, it'll be easier, because it's just sharing information amongst staff and not calling a big meeting to order, so. Talking to Jeff Bathke and John Clegg, it sounds like who they would have represent the county on that would be John, or not John, excuse me, Jeff Bathke. So we can give him a copy of the proceed, or the application, once the procedure's finalized, they can provide comment, and that would go to planning and zoning and, and the rest of the review.
Okay, and so that's, the, the gist of the process is, there'll be a, I'll call it a city slash county review of a request, planning and zoning, and then council.
Right.
And the booklet or whatever will kind of outline what happens in those steps.
Yep, and talking to Jeff, the county just felt good if they were able to at least provide their comments as part of the application.
We met with them at least once before on other tip actions and that stuff, so, okay.
And I told them I would bring, report that back to council at the second reading, so.
Motion to a place on second reading. Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Chark, you've got to be quicker, Mr. Wright. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion by Mr. Rice to adopt, second by Mr. Barrington. Roll comment, or, excuse me, any further comments on this? Anybody in the audience wish to address it? Roll call vote, please.
Sabers.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Dozier.
Aye.
McCartell.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota law one twenty-five two three legal.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. McCartell, discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Okay.